Good evening, I'm Kim Melnick, Chair of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, and I hereby call this meeting to order at six o'clock on this twenty-seventh day of August twenty twenty-four. Thank you to those who have joined us in person and online. Madam Clerk, will you please announce the roll call?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board chamber are Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Kendrick, Ms. Owens, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Okay, and for the record, Mrs. Manning is not here this evening. Okay, if you would, please join me in observing a moment of silence. And please stand as you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands when we are issued under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, we have no student, employee, or public awards or recognitions this evening, so I'll move right on to the adoption of the agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda as presented? Yes, Ms. Weems?
Yeah, I'm sorry if I've overlooked this, but I've got a question of where is the resolution on this?
It's not.
Okay, are we adding it, or is it just for our information for later?
So, that is an addition that was suggested by another board member, and Kami, Mrs. Lanetti, produced that language for us to review, so you have that.
Okay, so we're not voting on this today?
No.
But we'll vote on it sometime in the future. Okay. Okay, that's all I need, no, thank you.
Okay. All right, so no modifications, so then the motion is made by Ms. Riggs, seconded by Ms. Kendrick. Any discussion? Seeing none, the voting board is open.
So, Madam Chair, we have ten ayes, the motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda.
Thank you. Dr. Robertson, Superintendent Report and Recognitions, clearly we have some this evening.
Yeah, so, good evening, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. Here are a few items of interest for you and our families. Several events this summer demonstrated how Virginia Beach City Public Schools provides unique experiences to help prepare our students, families, and staff for a successful school year. For example, the Department of Teaching and Learning held its Second Annual Summer Conference August sixth at Calum High School. Hundreds of our educators chose among one hundred professional learning sessions. They learned the latest assessment tools and deepened their understanding of students' cultural differences. Teachers traded tips on artificial intelligence, interactive learning network techniques, small group tactics, and more. The goal of the conference was to empower educators to use innovative and aligned learning experiences in their teaching practices with a focus on future-ready learners. We were glad to provide the opportunity to our educators, and I want to thank the D-Tall team and all of our presenters for sharing their insight. Next, I want to share an exciting new opportunity for our valuable Assistant Principals. On August seventh, we hosted our first-ever Assistant Principals Conference under the theme Coachella: Leading, Learning, and Living Our Best Lives.
That's awesome.
Our Assistant Principals were challenged to lead with passion and purpose while prioritizing well-being and personal fulfillment. The sixty-four breakout sessions at Calum High School enabled leaders across schools, offices, and departments to elevate their skills, foster collaboration, and celebrate success stories. More than two-hundred-and-fifty Assistant Principals, administrative assistants, academic coordinators, and deans attended the event. In total, between the two events, we had roughly fifteen-hundred staff engaged in two days of learning. Sessions in this AP Conference focused on special education, instructional leadership, and balancing priorities. We'd like to thank again the members of the Assistant Principal Planning Committee for a job well done. Our Office of Student Support Services worked with Aid Now and other community partners to help families at the Jump Start Event, August eighth, at Loxbury Middle School. Aid Now helped start this event fourteen years ago when Virginia Beach City Public Schools asked for help providing services to families heading back to school. The first Jump Start Event had four stations welcoming two-hundred-and-seventy-five children. This year, we had thirty-seven stations helping six-hundred children who are part of Project Hope, which serves students who are experiencing homelessness or housing instability. Those six-hundred children represent a group that numbers close to nine-hundred. Ann Christie, founder and president of Aid Now, said the event ensures all of our families have everything they need to succeed in school. Another community partner, Moms on a Mission, has been participating for three years now. The executive director told us that Jump Start helps our organization make sure every student comes to school clean, appropriately dressed, and ready to learn. I'd like to thank everyone involved with Jump Start for being part of the community effort to help our families feel prepared and proud on the first day of school. It's touching to see so many people come together across our city and our school division to put students first. On August twelfth, School Board Chair Melnick and I welcomed our first-year teachers and educators who are new to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. The new educator orientation is a three-day event organized by the school division's Office of Professional Growth and Innovation. On the first day, teachers visited their schools in the morning and then traveled to Bayside High School for lunch and professional learning sessions. Bayside cheerleaders greeted them as they arrived, and more than three-hundred-and-fifty participants met in the auditorium before dividing up into small groups. I introduced them to Virginia Beach City Public Schools' mission, vision, and strategic plan. I shared some of my experience as a teacher and stressed the importance of learning from mentors. I assured our new teachers that we'll support them not only through their first year, but through their entire careers with Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And then finally, we had a record turnout of more than seven-thousand people at the August seventeenth Back-to-School Care Fair at the Virginia Beach Convention Center. From backpacks to haircuts, physicals to vaccines, and vision screening to eye exams, our Back-to-School Care Fair made a difference. A heartfelt thank you to our one-hundred-plus partners in Virginia Beach City Public School Departments for their unwavering support. This community came together to distribute and administer thirty-five-hundred backpacks, one-hundred-and-twenty-eight haircuts, one-hundred-and-sixteen physicals, two-hundred-and-sixty-one vaccines, and three-hundred-and-fifteen vision screenings. It's truly been a great back-to-school for Virginia Beach. Thank you, Madam Chair. This concludes my report. And also have some recognitions.
Like, I know what's next.
I figure I'd let them pause out there.
Yeah.
Okay, first up, we want to recognize Kirsten Williams. We're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Kirsten to be the next Assistant Principal at Pembroke Elementary School, and she's actually been in that position for a little over two weeks now, and so Kirsten, welcome, and I see you have some guests. Next up, we have Maureen Allison, who also started on August fourteenth, and we're pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for her to be the next Assistant Principal at Princess Anne Middle School. And we see you have some guests.
I have my principal, Mr. Andrew Poliquix. My mom and dad, Patty Bruce Pecklock, and my husband, Daniel Allison.
Welcome, thank you. Next up, we have Joy Boone, who actually will be starting in a couple of weeks. We're pleased that you've recommended her to shift from Assistant Principal Lynnhaven Middle School to the Coordinator at Achievable Dream Academy at Lynnhaven Middle School. And Joy, you have some guests.
I have Principal Emily Wilton, she's reading Patty, I have my friend, my husband, my mom, who built up my dreams, my daughter, my younger friend, Frank, and my other mother.
Thank you, congratulations. Next up, we have Megan Siminac, and that name's familiar because her husband was here a few weeks ago, and she's here now, and we're pleased that you have allowed, accepted our recommendation for her to join her husband as Assistant Principal. You're at Great Neck Middle School, so let the games begin. So I know you have some guests.
Yes, yes. My husband, Richard Siminac, my mother, Catherine Schneers, my mother-in-law, Ted Siminac, my aunt, Ann Miller, my sister-in-law, Dr. Christina Bruni, my niece, Francesca Bruni, my father-in-law, Don Siminac, and my cousin, Beth. His parents are in it.
And last but not least, Kelly Swainer. We are pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Kelly Swainer to be the next coordinator in student leadership, in the office of student leadership, or in student leadership, in the office of school leadership, and Kelly has actually been in the position for several weeks now, and so Kelly, you have some guests.
I brought my grandma, Kelly, my husband, Ariel Bruni, my mom, Bruni Swainer, my sister-in-law, my former principal, Melissa Burridge, and my former high school SCA advisor and co-ordinator and co-ordinator, Megan Timmons.
For board members, a number of these individuals and their parents and relatives work for us, or have worked for us in the past, and many have been students for us, and I think that speaks to the strength of this community and this division, so we are pleased that you're sharing them with us, and we'll take good care of them. You might see a little less of them, but we'll take good care of them, and thank you very much for coming out.
So while they're exiting, I'll entertain a motion. Well, first, are there any modifications to the minutes as presented from August thirteenth? Okay, then, I'll entertain a motion, Ms. Kendrick, seconded Mr. Callen. Any discussion? All right, then the voting board is open.
So, Madam Chair, we have nine ayes and one abstention for the approval of the minutes from August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'm abstaining because I was not here for the entire meeting, the last meeting.
Okay, the School Board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through twelve, public education in Virginia Beach, and the business of the School Board and the School Division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the School Board Clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the public comment section of the School Board Agenda is for the School Board to offer an orderly forum to receive public comments during the School Board meeting. I'd like to remind everyone attending tonight's meeting, this includes those on the dais and those in the audience and online, to please speak with respect and kindness. The School Board also invites the public to submit comments through our group email account, which can be found on our website. Madam Clerk, would you please introduce the first speaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to let the School Board members know that Speaker number four had to cancel, so we will start with Kim Mayo, Matthew Cody Connor, and Virginia Jankot.
Good evening. I want to shine light on old donation-gifted school monopolizing our budget while also excluding learning-disabled students. Let's also discuss new buildings, new school buildings, and I'll highlight some key data. First, as revealed at July ninth School Board Retreat, ODS, which accounts for just eleven percent of gifted students in Virginia Beach City Schools monopolizes fifty-seven percent of the twenty-million-dollar gifted budget. Why is this, does anybody know? Secondly, it's very interesting who is left out and somehow doesn't get chosen to attend ODS, even with last year's lottery. I will email this FOIA data to the School Board. During the current twenty-four, twenty-five school year, the percentage of ODS students with an IEP is zero-point-nine-seven percent, but the percentage of non-ODS gifted identified students with an IEP is two-point-five-six percent. Is there good explanation why these IEP learners are in neighborhood schools? It appears mathematically impossible that the exclusion of IEP students is by chance. Tuition programs and private schools should be able to do what they want, but ODS is a public school. If you're new to VB schools, please read Vicky Manning's Behind the Wall of Government Schools, and the WHRO News article, June twenty-sixth, for transparency on the ODS lottery and updates. There is nothing that many separates many admitted to ODS from those in regular schools. Many don't understand why Virginia Beach has one gifted school when experts like Dr. Plucker tell us the obvious. It's not a best practice. I appreciate elite military academies and highly competitive universities. I attended Boston University with a low acceptance rate, but we're testing six-year-olds for ODS. As taxpayers were being asked to fund building expensive but needed new school buildings, ODS's lavish state-of-the-art building could be repurposed. This is something eighty-nine percent of families getting the short end of the gifted budget hogged by one school could get behind, as well as the general public. We can all come up with better ways to spend our limited resources, maybe armed SROs in all elementary schools, maybe use ODS as a satellite location. Let's step out of our limited, this is the way, Virginia Beach does things mentality on the five-year plan. We can learn from other cultures and school communities and come up with alternatives. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Matthew Cody Connor, then Virginia Jankot, then Alan Wakefield.
I just wanted to start by mentioning that this is Virginia's first-ever Smart Week, highlighting gun safety and gun storage, and our mayor has actually signed a proclamation, and I'd really like to see our School Board get on board with protecting our kids' lives. After this speech, I'm probably going to take a break for a bit while I run for city council. I've dedicated an immeasurable amount of time and energy to speaking truths towards power, and now I will be working towards bringing more power to the truth. Since I won't be here to remind you, I want you to remember a few things while I'm gone. First, remember that love is an action, and I challenge you to really look at your actions and the actions of those that you serve with, and be honest about what you see, because there's no right way to do the wrong thing, and the more lessons it takes for you to learn that, the worse it's going to be for our children in public schools. And remember that "public" means for everybody, and that's what it takes to make our country and our society great. It takes everybody. Our education system should not be policing people's beliefs. It shouldn't be a spy and report agency for uninvolved parents. It should just be a safe place for students to learn and teachers to teach. Our school leadership shouldn't be focused on how they can deny information to students. They should be focused on how they can teach it to them. Real leaders do not tear people down, they build them up. They bring people together, not tear them apart. Our children are watching, and they're learning, because that is what children do. The only real question is, what are we going to teach them? Are we going to thrust them down the same dark paths of ignorance and trauma that we've already walked? Are we going to give them all of our light and let them see a better way? I really hope you all see the light, because the kids in our schools, they deserve a brighter future. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Virginia Jankot, then Alan Wakefield, then Richard Pickens.
Good evening, everyone. Superintendent Robertson, Chairwoman Melnick, School Board members, thank you all for your service. My name is Ginger Jankot, and I serve as the Chairwoman of the Virginia Beach Human Rights Commission at this time. Something has come to the commission that I wanted to share with you all. We have written a letter to our liaison, Councilman Berlucci, about this issue, and he is reading that to city council tonight. I'm simply going to read the letter that we wrote to Councilman Berlucci that the city council is receiving, because it involves students. Dear Councilman Berlucci, as our liaison to the city council, along with Mayor Dyer, I want to update you on an issue discussed at our August eighth meeting and ask that you share it at the city council meeting. The Human Rights Commission received reports of ongoing racist, anti-Semitic, and homophobic content being posted on social media by Virginia Beach high school students this summer. We were shown photos and videos, some of which included students' names. The content featured slurs, mocking of religious texts, and even a student in blackface. There was also a video of students holding alcohol. Commissioners were disheartened to learn that no action could be taken by Virginia Beach schools since it occurred during the summer. Commissioners are outraged and have grave concern and disappointment of what appears to be an increase in this behavior. The School Board Chair and a deputy chief in attendance responded with the latter stating that he would investigate for criminal activity. It is alarming that such behavior could occur without consequence. Last October, in an Arizona school district, a teen was murdered by a rich white gang, which was fueled by social media, specifically Snapchat. The Virginia State Police Crime Report for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three came out last week, and in the category of hate crimes, there is an increase of one-hundred-seventy-seven percent for anti-Semitism and a rise in homophobic crimes. Given these statistics and the work being done by VB CPS to address these issues through programs like TIDE, Togetherness Through Inclusion Diversity and Equity Coalition, which is active at each high school on a small scale to help improve students' sense of belonging, we need to consider how to protect and reach all students by providing a better, safer path forward in respect for everyone. We thank you for your service as our liaison, and I thank all of you.
Our next speaker is Alan Wakefield, and then Richard Pickens.
Good evening. Good evening, School Board members, Dr. Robertson, and School Board members. My name is Alan Wakefield. I used to be a teacher of alternative kids, and before that, I was in the Marines. The last few days, I have come across several adjectives that describe an excellent teacher. I picked two of the most important. The first one I liked was creative, a teacher who is imaginative and innovative, finding new and engaging ways to teach and inspire their students, and encouraging creativity and originality in their work. Number two, diverse, a teacher who is knowledgeable and respectful of different children and cultures and backgrounds, and who creates a classroom environment that is welcoming and inclusive. I thought that, to me, they were the most major things that I liked. Okay, now I'm going to do a short experiment to show just a little bit of this. I won't take too long, hopefully. I broke my glass back there, my wife's going to be mad at me now. And if I have to go home or not, I'll have to go buy one, I guess. What I'm going to do is put this, and put this over the top of this, just set it over the top of it, okay? Then we'll turn it over. Now, what should I do now? Should I just hold it here? This is not doing it, the cup's not doing it. I'm sorry. I needed that glass, and my wife said, "Don't break the glass." Well, thank you very much.
To be continued.
Thank you, girl.
Our next speaker is Richard Pickens.
I told Cody Connor when I came out, I'm going to have to dress better if he keeps wearing those jackets. I was a little surprised, but he's running for office, so that's what it is. I'm here to talk about sexually explicit books, and not just sexually explicit, I heard one of the speakers about a month and a half back talked about LGBTQ plus, and I thought, yeah, even that, I think there's an indoctrination that's widespread across our nation, it's not just locally here. So I've been researching and studying and reading the books that the American Library Association has been posting on their sites at the top ten banned, because people always say, "Well, have you read them?" And I want to be able to say, "Yes, I have read them." And someone asked me this week, they said, "What is the School Board's policy? How do you address a book that you think needs addressing, or needs to be banned, or that you have a problem with?" And I said, "You know what? I don't really, I know there is something in place, but I don't really know how it works." And so I thought I'd come, and I'm really going to ask this, and if someone could help me to find that, I looked on site, and I saw something, but I couldn't make, I couldn't figure out what the process would be, because I had come across a book that I would like to challenge, I'd like to take it through the process and see how it works, and I think there can be, I mean, people can have differences of opinions, but the books that I've been reading are highly sexual, and you can write things that deal with sensitive subjects. As a writer, I know this, in a way that's powerful, that gets your point across without being overly graphic, but that's not what's happening in these books. These books are overly graphic in a way that it stirs things inside of people that are inappropriate for children and young people. And even some of the books that have won awards, and one of the ones I want to challenge is Toni Morrison's Bluest Eye, recommended to me of all people by a pastor. When I took one of the books off the website, I brought that one up, he said, "Oh, that one's a great book." He said, "Have you read it?" And I said, "I don't know." I pulled that one out of my brain, but no, I haven't read that one. So after some time, I got it out of the library, I did read the book, and I found four places that are so extremely graphic and inappropriate. Not only that, they leave you with no moral conclusion. One of them is a man having sex with young kids, young girls, and he glorifies it, there's no consequence for it. And so I thought, it doesn't leave me with a good feeling. And another thing about the book, and my vantage point, it suffers the worst thing of all, it was kind of boring, but that means that, that's my personal opinion. I feel like there is an attack by the American Library Association against what I believe, they call them book bans, and they say that they are fighting for intellectual freedom in the pursuit of keeping these books in play, and I'm not a book banner or a book burner. I love books, in fact, my wife says, "Don't buy any more books." We have books all throughout our house. I love books, but if I went to an AA meeting, at the end of the meeting, they had, were serving alcohol and had a keg, I would say, "I'm not a beer banner or an anti-drinking denier, but I think it's inappropriate to have that in that place." And so while those books may be available in other venues, I think to sponsor them through our finances and through our taxation, when it's reprehensible to me, I think I do have something to question on that. I think there's a place, they can be got at other places, but not here.
And that is time.
So someone get back with me on that, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. And Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item twelve on our agenda, information. We have seven policies, and we welcome Mrs. Lanetti, our School Board Attorney.
Good evenings, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Kami Lanetti, the School Board Attorney, and on behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I'll be bringing recommendations from the August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four PRC meeting. There are six policies, and you'll see a somewhat unusual AA regulation that we have. So let's start with our first one, which is two forty-two. Again, we're going through the different sections, this is part of the administration section. Two forty-two is school support process. You'll see here there are just minor scrivener's changes that have been under Section D, where we're changing annually to biannually, and a couple typographical things that we've changed. Other than that, there are no other recommendations to policy two forty-two, or any questions about two forty-two. I mean, no questions? Are there any questions for two forty-two? We'll move on to three five. Three five is under Business and Non-Instructional Operations Section. Again, this has to do with the budget generally. There are just minor scrivener changes to this particular section. There are no other suggested recommendations. Are there any questions on policy three five? Are there any questions on policy three five? We'll look at policy three six. Again, it's budget. This is budget preparation and approval. You'll see a minor change under Section B where we're just going to make it consistent with the state code, which requires seven days. We've had ten, but this required seven, so we just matched it to the state code. On Section E, I added Section E, publication of budget, which the state law requires that you publish the annual budget in line item form on the school division's website. You have always done that. That's not been a question for us. We just, it wasn't written into our policy. So I went ahead and put that in the policy, but that has been your practice for as long as I've been here. Are there any questions on policy three six? Ms. Anderson?
Under B, public hearings, was that changed from ten to seven days due to state law or?
The state law, the state law says seven days, so I just matched it to the state law.
Okay, thank you.
Are there no further questions on policy three six? We'll move on to policy three eight. This is small, women-owned, service-disabled veterans, minority-owned business practices, business participation in school division procurements. There were only changes, mostly formatting changes and some minor scrivener changes starting in Section D. You recognize that other than that, there are no recommended substantive changes to policy three eight. Are there any questions on policy three eight? Moving on to policy three ninety. Three ninety is your contract execution policy. There are minor scrivener changes throughout this. You'll see some changes starting in Section two and a little bit of reorganization of formatting that starts later in Section two. So you'll see it's putting more numbers in just to make, separate the paragraphs out. I don't believe there are any other substantive changes to policy three ninety. Yeah, and there's some minor scrivener changes in the editor's notes. Those are all the recommended changes, mostly formatting changes to three ninety. Are there any questions on policy three ninety? Are there no questions on policy three ninety? We'll move on to policy four ten. This is conditions of employment. In Section I, which is towards the end of this policy, it's here, I go a few in there. There were some changes made to the probationary periods. We spent some time talking about this at PRC as to what counts as a full year for probationary purposes. Remember, you have to have three consecutive years in your school division to qualify as probationary period. And while it's always been defined as on one hundred sixty days, we might, we might make sure it's clear that anytime you work one hundred sixty days in that three-year period, it will count as your full probationary year. So that's the clarification in Section I. Are there any other questions? And it's a little bit of renumbering after that, but in that, no significant changes after that. But any questions on four ten? Are there no questions on four ten? You notice the next one up is a regulation. By law, you do not have responsibility for regulations other than in Student Discipline Matters. However, this one was a question that's come up for us many times and we've had up here before. This is, this regulation six seventy-two point one, it has to do with student evaluation and class rank. On there, in particular, we were looking at the waiting for some of our alternative types of programs, such as Governor's School for the Arts and Dual Enrollment. But going through this, we realized we needed to clean up the policy. So you'll see that for Section A, pulling out the editor's notes, there is some old language, which happens periodically with our policies, having to do with grading. So you'll see down at, towards the end of the first page in Section A, it talked about for school years two thousand thirteen, fourteen, we've calculated that there should be no students remaining in our school division who would be subject to the old grading policies. So we recommended pulling that out. We clarified in Section two and three, just cleaning up what these language was there. If you move down into Section B, this is class rank on there. We had to do some renumbering and we got ourselves to where we needed to be on, look at some of the awarding for bonus credits. So under Section B, other than some minor scrivener changes under Section one, Section two will now read awarding bonus credit for approved courses. And you notice that we've added the dual enrollment course under the first paragraph. We are taking out Governor's School for the Arts. Not that we're not doing, we're just moving it down to its own paragraph later on. So then we broke out in here and we decided to format this differently. So it'll be year-long courses, talk about the bonus credit. B is semester-long courses accrediting. There's an example under Section C. If you move to Section three, we move Governor's School for the Arts into its own section, awarding bonus credit for approved courses. You'll see that they're recommending half amount of bonus credits and how they'll be awarded. So that's in three A. That then had to move us to, we number four or five on there. And we went ahead, gave them titles in those sections, and then again, renumbered under six and seven. Clarification under valedictorians and soliditorians shows up in Section eight to clarify that and taking out the editor's notes. So the significant changes really in this section had to do with addition of dual enrollment and the Governor's School for the Arts credits.
Okay, I know we have some questions on that. Ms. Anderson?
So in, well, number three, where it says Governor's School for the Arts, awarding bonus credit for approved courses, Governor's School for the Arts courses shall receive half the amount of bonus credit as advanced placement courses. Why did we arrive at that, that particular? What caused the committee to arrive at that, that particular type of language, half the amount? And how does that compare to the other school divisions that do award credit? Bonus credit for Governor's School, can anybody answer? First of all, why is it half? And second of all, how does it compare to the other school divisions?
I'm going to go to the subject matter experts.
Good evening. From the May fourteenth meeting or workshop presentation that we provided, we shared a list of what neighboring school divisions do when it comes to weighted credits. And for Governor's School, it's half the amount for our neighboring school divisions. And so to be consistent with our neighboring school divisions, that's where the language of half the amount came from.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. It wasn't explained to me about that. Also, when are we starting this? That was the other question that we discussed in May at the PRC meeting, when this would, when this would, when this would start.
So Bobby, I'll, I'll take that one. So this is odd that you would see a regulation. Okay, the reason we brought this forward as regulation is there was a lot of discussion, there's been a lot of discussion about weighted grades for years. So we wanted to show you the changes we were going to make. And there is a question, which we're going to seek some guidance, on when do we start it? We potentially could start it effective this year. We could start it effective next year. We could have started effective with the incoming ninth grade class or sixth grade class and down the road. I, I, I think that no matter when we start it, somebody's going to be out of sequence. So I am seeking some guidance on the board's wishes on how, when do you want to make these regulation changes effective?
As far as I'm concerned, I'd like to see it as soon as we can, as soon as possible.
So, I'll be honest, this is something I've been working on for a decade. My daughter was a Governor's School student. And I don't think people unders, I think we do now, but I don't think that people understood the rigor that exists at the Governor's School for the Arts. They are the top one-half of one percent of our kids that are attending those programs. I know people go to, people go to performances or shows and they're blown away by what they see. And my response is you should be blown away by what you see. Because the rigor that these students are part of every single day, that is their end production. And so to hold this back another year, to have Virginia Beach students competing for scholarships where GPA is, is one of the first things people look at, puts our students at a disadvantage. And so our students have been in a disadvantage for, for a very long time. And it's the same with the dual enrollment courses. Those should be weighted and I, I just cannot imagine another day going by that our students are not receiving the credit that they deserve. Ms. Brown?
So when we discussed this in the policy committee in May, I, I want to say it was in June, actually. June, July, and then in August, the discussion was that these changes would take place next year. And, and really the reason is, is that there are probably a number of children that would have selected their courses differently this year, had they have known these changes would go into effect. And while there may be shuffling and people left behind, my, my son is actually a great example. He's in three AP classes. He definitely would have done dual enrollment. And, you know, I personally would love to see a more holistic look than riding on one test. But, you know, here we are and he did that because of the scholarships. And so I, you know, can't change class schedules now. I, I do though, I want to ask and I want to make sure, because I have a little bit of confusion since this was in a regulation instead of a policy. And I was under the impression when we, we asked for a policy to come back and a regulation came to the PRC that we would be voting on this. Are we going to take a vote on this regulation?
Yeah, there's not a vote on regulations.
Okay, well then, I, I would, I would ask that we also take this information and put it into a policy because I, I want to make sure that it doesn't get lost in the shuffle with the future board.
Ms. Brown, I will remind, you did an update to your bylaws a number of years ago, which would allow, under certain circumstances, if you want to approve a regulation, you can ask to approve a regulation. We could turn it into a policy, probably have to renumber it. Or on the offhand, if a majority of the board wants to go ahead and make, just approve this regulation, you could do it that way also.
So I, I would like to see us vote on it so that it has the force of an official vote. I'm fine with matching the policy to it instead, but I did, I was under the impression when we asked for a policy and it came back in a regulation that we were going to be voting on it and that that was kind of the suggestion of the easiest way to take that path, so. Those are my thoughts. Ms. Riggs?
First of all, I think we should be voting on this regulation and make this one of the things that we can do that for. And the second of all, I agree with Mrs. Melnick. This needs to start now. No, we don't need to keep kicking this can down the road and waiting till this happen or waiting till that happen. Because it's going to, it's going to be different for anybody, no matter when we start, like, like Dr. Robertson said. It's time to do this now. So I think we should. I'm not going to reiterate everything that Ms. Melnick said. She said it very eloquently and that's what I think we should be doing.
Well, I'm going to repeat myself and I'm going to say, we have heard from families, from students for years. For years, they are competing against neighboring divisions and they're at a disadvantage. It has been my personal mission for a decade to get this taken care of. It's been painful to watch Virginia Beach City Public School students hop on a bus and drive out to Norfolk only to get less credit for the other kids who are hopping on buses and other school divisions and they're all coming together. It's, it's, I just cannot wrap my head around it. I do appreciate the work you've done. I'm glad that we are on, on an even par with the other neighboring divisions. And that's, that's a tricky one, how other divisions weight their stuff, but it sounds like we're together. And I, I think it's the right thing to do for students. And it's like, like Dr. Robertson said, there's probably never going to be a perfect time, but we should have done this ten years ago. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
One last thing. Are we going to do this as a policy or are we going to ask Dr. Robertson to just please?
I could do it either way. Well, the question is, do you want to vote on it? You could go ahead and we could invoke it and we could add it just to vote as a regulation. If you want me to change it to a policy, I'm going to have to figure out what policy number it would be. We could bring it back that way. Otherwise, if you just want to approve the regulation this time, we can put it on next time to vote.
So Dr. Robertson, you have this within your power.
Oh, absolutely.
Would you like to see a vote to see if you need to do this immediately or?
Yeah, so honestly, I'm really cautious about asking the board to vote on regulations. I worry about the president that can set, set that the number of regulations that we have to write and adjust based upon policy changes could become overwhelming to both the board and staff. I am prepared to make a recommendation that we, we make this effective immediately, which is probably where we would have landed, but I know that this is a topic that you guys have had a lot of discussion about. Quite frankly, I'm a bit of a loss right now of how to help us get to a resolution. It's a regulation and based upon that, you know, again, my recommendation is we make it effective now. But I've heard the, the comments by the PRC chair, which you can't discount, so.
It wouldn't be that hard for me to turn it into a policy next time. I just don't, can't tell you which number it would be right now. It wouldn't be, because there's another, there's an overriding policy for this. If you want me to bring it back as a policy, we can do that. Otherwise, you can just override and vote it as a regulation.
That's what I'd like to see. Let's just do that. I mean, that's my recommendation, but I'm just one person.
Thank you. I, I would suggest that if my colleagues have consensus that we allow this to be effective immediately and then we follow up with the policy that matches in the PRC. Thank you.
Ms. Riggs?
I agree. Were you next?
No.
Yeah, Mr. Culpepper.
I am, I am so sorry. Mr. Culpepper.
Okay, all I was going to do is say exactly the same thing.
Okay, good. No, say, but you say it because she spoke, so you say it. Go ahead. Oh, the same thing Ms. Brown said? Okay, all right. All right, Ms. Riggs.
And I agree with Ms. Brown. I think what Ms. Lanetti has offered was, go ahead and write that policy. Turn it into a policy. I don't, I don't think it needs to go back to the policy.
Consign this tomorrow. We will then take it to PRC, figure out what the number is. We'll have to withdraw and we'll take care of that in another PRC meeting.
As long as it starts tomorrow and we can move on.
But wait a minute. The superintendent started this conversation by saying, I'm a little concerned about this becoming a policy and what that, what the trickle-down effect is going to be.
No, it's a regulation.
A regulation.
But you know, a regulation.
Okay, I beg your pardon. Okay.
We're working in reverse right here, which, which still will work if we go back and create a policy that captures the spirit of what the regulation is. So I think that will still work.
But you'll be able to implement this immediately?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, sorry about that. All right, anybody else? Ms. Owens?
And I, I feel like this part goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway. I, I'm sure that our communication team is then going to come together to get some messaging out because it is going to be a big change for, for all of our families in high school, whether you're taking these classes or not taking these classes. It's going to impact class rankings and all of those things. And so we'll need some messaging that can coincide with where they can find this information. And so when we say putting it in place immediately, and I, I'm all for immediacy, I, I'm hoping that our immediately is going to align with when it can be posted on the site and families can go back and, and reference it. So if that can't happen tomorrow, then let's not implement it tomorrow. Let's make sure that our timing with communication, I mean, it's all the same whether it happens tomorrow or any time this semester. So let's make sure we get that timing. Thank you.
Okay, fair enough. I'll leave the professionals to that piece. Okay. All right. Now, I welcome Dr. Heidi Janeki, Director of Research and Evaluation, on our program evaluation schedule for twenty-four, twenty-five. Welcome, Dr. Janeki.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the school board and Dr. Robertson. This evening, I will share the proposed schedule of program evaluations that will be conducted during two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. The schedule is developed based on School Board Policy six dash two-six. Before presenting the evaluation schedule for the upcoming year, I'll provide an overview of the evaluation reports that will be provided in upcoming months based on last year's schedule. The reports that will be provided to the school board this fall and winter based on the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four program evaluation schedule are shown on the slide. These include the Year One Implementation Evaluation of Behavioral and Mental Health Supports for Students that were new initiatives or expansions of related initiatives that have not been evaluated previously. The evaluation addressed multiple initiatives such as the Implementation of the Behavior Intervention Support Team or BIST Professional Learning, Rapid Response, the Bridge Program, Responsive Classroom Practices, the BASE Program, and Communities in Schools. The Year Two and Final Evaluation of Canvas, the Division's Learning Management System, focused on the outcomes of implementing Canvas and goal attainment. In addition, the Second Year Evaluation of the Three-Year Evaluation Plan for Alternative Education at Renaissance Academy continued with a focus on program operation as well as analyzing student outcome data. Continued with a focus on program operation as well as analyzing student outcome data. As stipulated by school board policy, the proposed two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five program evaluation schedule that will be shown on the next slide. Was developed based on evaluation requirements for programs. Based on the policy, new programs or initiatives that operate with local resources are evaluated for a minimum of two years. And then during the year of full implementation, if a program takes more than two years to implement. Programs that have been previously evaluated may also remain on the schedule as a result of an evaluation plan for the program. That was previously approved by the school board. In addition, the program evaluation committee reviews existing programs for possible addition to the evaluation schedule as space allows. The committee includes representatives from various departments and schools, the Virginia Beach Education Association and the community. Committee members identify programs to be recommended for inclusion on the schedule based on criteria in the policy. Each year, the proposed program evaluation schedule is presented to the superintendent's senior staff to obtain feedback regarding the recommendations. The proposed evaluation schedule for the upcoming two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five school year will require school board approval. This slide presents the proposed program evaluation schedule for the upcoming two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five school year. The first two programs listed represent previously planned evaluations. The final year three evaluation of the Renaissance Academy Alternative Education Program will focus on the program's effectiveness and outcomes. And the second year evaluation of select behavioral and mental health supports for students. Will also focus on collecting and analyzing data related to program effectiveness and outcomes. An Achievable Dream Academy was added to the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five program evaluation schedule. Because with the first group of twelfth graders this year, two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five is the year the program reaches full implementation. Across all planned grade levels. The evaluation will focus on the accomplishment of the program's goals and program effectiveness while also reviewing implementation data for all school levels. The final two proposed additions to the schedule are the Scratch Cooking Initiative and the Pre-Kinder Garden Program. Each of these programs received high ratings from the program evaluation committee for inclusion on the evaluation schedule. Because the implementation involves multiple departments and they were perceived to have the potential to have a large. And positive impact on VBCPS reaching its goals. It was determined that these two programs would be scheduled for an evaluation readiness report. The evaluation readiness process will allow the evaluators in collaboration with the program managers and staff. To define specific measurable goals and objectives for the program evaluation. To determine the design of the evaluation and specific data that will be used to measure goal attainment and to develop an evaluation plan. This concludes the presentation of the program evaluation schedule for the upcoming school year, I'm available for any questions.
Okay, so I see no questions, but that's a full plate for research and evaluation, so, so, thank you, we look forward to all of that this year.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we welcome Dr. Crystal Lewis Wilkerson, Director of K twelve and Gifted Programs for the Local Plan for the Education of the Gifted Update.
Good evening, my name is Danielle Calucci and I serve as our Chief Academic Officer and I would like to just say a few words before Dr. Wilkerson shares. An abundance of information um, with you this evening. We return to you with a proposed draft plan which was posted to you last week in its entirety. The purpose of the presentation tonight is to give you the opportunity to ask questions. Um, and really review some of the most significant adjustments based on the feedback of our stakeholders. Dr. Wilkerson, along with her team, have worked alongside the school board, our GCAC and our gifted subcommittee planning teams. To really examine every point of view. Factors such as funding, feasibility, logistics, all of the challenges that come with change, to see what we could do. That would make the best proposed plan as possible, there will always be opportunity for future change. Um, and more adjustments, there's nothing that says that we can't make adjustments in a couple of years and that this is set in stone for five. Although we do like to propose a plan that will last for five years. Um, so with all of that in mind, um, I want to remind everyone that's listening, um, as well as the school board that. All through our collaboration um, this year. We kept coming to the same conclusion that this is so complex. And that it is going to be hard to please everyone with every difference that you see in the plan. But um, I say wholeheartedly that we took everyone's opinion and perspective and experience that they had very seriously. We examined things over and over, um, and the team really did try to base everything on the majority of. Feedback that we received from various stakeholder groups, including the school board, where there wasn't a clear majority. They looked to the majority of the school board's will as you represent your districts. So, with that being said, um, Dr. Wilkerson will present those highlights, you have the plan in its entirety. She would not have time to go line by line through the whole plan and I trust that you'll review that as well, um, we thank you. This school board has spent a lot of time on this. And so I wanna honor that by just really saying thank you to all of you. Um, many of you s- sent pages of your own feedback after you reviewed the options that we uh, discussed together. As partners at the retreat, so, um, thank you, um, please save your questions until she gets through all of the significant adjustments. That are being proposed, um, because she has saved time for questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Calucci. Good evening, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, school board members and Dr. Robertson. I'm Crystal Wilkerson, the Director of K twelve and Gifted Programs, and joining me today are members of the Gifted Administration Team. The full proposed draft plan has been posted for the school board's pr- uh, review and for the public comment since August the twenty second. And we have also provided a hard copy for you and your materials. This evening, we will spend time reviewing some of the most significant differences between the proposed plan. And the current plan based on options that we discussed together during the school board retreat. Before we begin, I wanna share that the administration's recommendations. Were developed based on the majority of the feedback from the school board, subcommittees and GCAC. In addition to the requirements of the Virginia Department of Education and in consideration of data and resources. When a majority of the feedback was not clear, just like Mrs. McCalucci shared, um, from all groups, the administration took the school board's input. Resources and data to make our recommendations this evening, we will take questions at the end of the presentation. Allow me to review some of the action steps taken to develop this proposed plan. We have worked collaboratively with both the twenty twenty four, excuse me, twenty twenty three, twenty four and the twenty four, twenty five GCAC members. To solicit their feedback as an advisory committee. Every twenty three, twenty four GCAC member was also assigned to a subcommittee. Where they participated in multiple meetings and provided feedback within two input forms. We also partnered with the GCAC to send the new members who joined the GCAC in July, the same input form. That was provided to the school board, so that new members could also provide feedback and then we met for a special meeting. On August the fourth. We have facilitated and solicited the feedback of our gifted plan. Subcommittees, which consisted of eighty one total members, including parents, staff, GRTs. GCAC members, ODS staff, teachers at all levels, school counselors and administrators. We thoroughly reviewed the national gifted standards and VDOE requirements. Funding considerations and the associated impacts, gifted student data. And local gifted plans from our neighbors throughout the Commonwealth. We also collaborated with other Virginia school divisions on their gifted processes and gathered your input. I too would like to sa- take a second to thank the school board for your ongoing partnership and the time that you have invested in this work. Together with the administration over the last year. Most recently, in our work together where we examined multiple options for developing the next plan during our July ninth retreat. During that retreat, we reviewed the important data, costs such as the comparison of funding going to old donation. Versus homeschools and we analyzed options for change within the draft plan. During the analysis of options, we shared considerations and answered school board members' questions related to the options. For your consideration. School board members were able to provide feedback related to each option. And also provided input after the retreat related to the plan in its entirely, entirety via a school board input form. Displayed here, you see the components that make up the full plan. As a reminder, VDOE requires these components and the use of their template. We will now review the administration's recommendations regarding the options that we discussed during the retreat. As well as an option that emerged during our time together at the retreat. There will be parts of the plan displayed on this slide that did not require a significant change or discussion. So, we will not cover each part this evening, but again, you have a hard copy and an electronic access to the full plan. So that you can review it in its entirety. Again, we will highlight the most significant changes in the options discussed at the retreat and you will notice that these were left in green. In green font in your draft plan. The first significant option we discussed is in part three of the plan, which addresses screening, referral. Identification and placement procedures. Here, the administration recommends moving the COGAT as a universal screener of the gifted process. Due to its limited impact on increasing representation from our Emerging Scholars Initiative or ESI schools. The COGAT would continue to be used to test students who have applied for gifted services. Or have applied to Old Donation School in all grades. As part of the profile for gifted identification, it is the recommendation of the administration. To require a student interview only in our secondary schools. As our elementary GRTs and teachers spend extensive amount of time with students observing and working with them. Across all disciplines, making the fifth grade interviews less impactful. The performance-based task is a two-part math problem task. And since we have other math data available as part of the multiple criteria requirement. And the performance-based task could present barriers to our English language learners and students with disabilities. It is the recommendation of administration to remove the PBT as a universal screening component. Of the identification process for first graders. The PBT and COGAT decisions will also increase availability of the elementary GRT services. To students in the gifted cluster model. Displayed here is an additional change noted in part three of the proposed draft plan. Although this was not an area the Office of Gifted Programs presented for discussion at the retreat. We have received requests from some subcommittee, community and school board members to shift the identification process. From grade one to grade two with GIA services beginning in grade three. This will allow second grade students to receive gifted talent development in grades K through two. Which may support us in increasing identification of underrepresented students. And allows for better cognitive development stabilization. Beginning GIA services in grades three, in grade three. Is also being used in many of our neighboring school divisions throughout the Commonwealth. This decision will also increase the seats available in grades three through five at Old Donation School. Which we will discuss in the coming slides. The final item I will highlight in part three of the draft plan is displayed here. Recall, during the retreat, the administration presented the option of adding one seat. To the highest rated applicant from each elementary school for grades three and six. The majority of feedback indicated that stakeholders and board members preferred this option. As opposed to keeping the current selection process. Stakeholder and subcommittee feedback regarding the desire for more representation from all schools. Was continuously shared with us and is reflective of recommendations of audits conducted by outside experts. For ODS selection processes. However, during the retreat, we were unaware that so many would express interest in eliminating grade two at ODS. To expand seats in grades three through five. When reviewing the impact of this on those applying for ODS middle school. And in consideration of three school board members who expressed that they might not be in favor of this due to their worry. That it would not leave enough open seats for the students scoring the highest rating of a five-five-five. The administration recommends that the highest rated applicant from each school's rising third graders. Is offered one of the first fifty-three seats in grade three, but we do not support doing this for grade five. As adding students to fifth grade who will matriculate to sixth grade will mean fewer seats are available. For entering sixth grade applicants. If we also added the highest rated from each elementary fifth grade, we would have only about forty-five seats available. If the school board wishes to approve the practice of selecting one third grader from each school, there would still be a hundred and three seats available. Although there are no guarantees. The administration feels that it would be highly unlikely that we would not have enough seats for third grade students. Scoring the highest rating of five-five-five to be offered a seat at ODS. Even after offering one to the highest rated student from each elementary school. I know that was a lot. Displayed here, you will see part six of, of the plan with the recommendation. Of the administration to adopt the updated purpose of ODS and the updated continuum infographic. To better reflect the comprehensive opportunities for advanced learning and gifted services. So, families are better informed of the options available for their student. It is also the recommendation of the administration for our gifted resource teachers. To have flexibility to deliver cluster services in a variety of ways. Including a pull-out model when it is appropriate based on data. To support students with an even greater differentiation as needed. For example, if a pre-assessment demonstrates a student is performing well beyond other students. And has mastered standards for a particular unit. The GRT would have the flexibility to not only push in to a, to the classes to co-teach and plan collaborative lessons. But they would also have the flexibility to pull students out for even more accelerated direct instruction. This also supports feedback from the gifted cluster evaluation and feedback from stakeholders. Indicating that it would be beneficial for elementary students to have a bolstered continuum of services. In the elementary cluster program. Also, within part six of the plan, the Office of Gifted Programs. Has had the request from stakeholders to shift the gifted identification process from grade one to grade two. Allowing students to receive GIA services beginning in grade three. This will allow second grade classes to receive talent development in K through two. And will allow students more time in school for developmental maturation before being assessed. It will also allow teachers and GRTs more time to observe. It will also allow teachers and G R Ts more time to observe and challenge students. To determine if gallant, if gifted traits and advanced performance are demonstrated. G R Ts and classroom teachers will be able to provide differentiated rigorous instruction to students. And group students performing at high levels who are in need of a faster pace and deeper content. While observing them and their performance. Also, within part six of the plan, as shared, the gifted office. Has received the request to expand the seats offered in grades three through five at O D S. By eliminating grade two, beginning the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Allow me to remind you, in the viewing public, that the school board recently voted on June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four. To add a classroom to grade three at O D S. This class would be subsumed by the additional sections that would be added to O D S. It would not be in addition to the sections that would be added. This would also mean that the school board would be approving the reopening of the science lab. For use by O D S elementary students. I will pause and give you a moment so that you can review this change and what it would mean for grades three through five. In all, the hundred and three seats in grade two would be shifted to grades three through five. I'm sorry, I said hundred, three hundred and thirty. Finally, I know it's been a lot. It is the administration's recommendation to begin this plan at the onset of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year in a hybrid model. We have made a note of these special circumstances by including dates of implementation throughout the draft plan. We would need to implement the identification and selection process for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. As these impact the implementation of the overall plan. Displayed on this slide, you will see second graders would not be screened for identification. During the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, since they were just screened in grade one. However, a second grade parent can submit an application. For gifted identification if their student was not screened or identified. Last year, or if they wish to apply to old donation school. Also to be implemented during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We would omit the grade five interview component and use the COGAT only when an application is submitted for students. Beginning in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, O D S would begin serving students in grade three through eight. And we would resume the screening process for gifted identification, beginning at grade two at that time. If we do not begin implementing this plan in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We would have to make amendments to the current plan to align with the updated identification and selection procedures. Should the draft plan be adopted. Coming to multiple school board meetings to get approval for those amendments will delay services, testing. And processes needed for smooth functioning of gifted education. Here you will see the gifted offices next steps. We will continue to gather community input through public comment from the posted draft plan through September the fifth. Our final step will be to return to the school board for action on September the tenth. As a reminder, this plan impacts the work we do, beginning in September of this school year. With our identification and selection processes. This concludes the presentation from the Office of Gifted Programs, and we welcome any questions that you might have.
The board's lighting up, uh, Ms. Anderson.
So, um, nothing has been mentioned about any satellite facilities that might help. Um, throughout the city, it, does this? Plan preclude any satellite facilities that might be made in the future? In other words, is it impossible for us to think about? Moving in a direction of doing a satellite facility, for example, for some of the schools in a particular area? Is that something that cannot, we can't even think about because it's not going to be a part of our plan, or could you?
Sure, I, I think, um, as Mrs. Calucci talked about at the very beginning, I don't think anything is impossible. I do think, as we talked about during our retreat, those are all things that we would have to make forward-thinking plans with as far as funding is concerned. Because there is a funding impact. Um, however, um, as she shared, we can do amendments to this plan, we can certainly make those considerations. As long as we have the funding available for those types of.
That, that was my question. In other words, we, we could make an amendment down the road for this, not, we wouldn't have to do that on September tenth. Is that possible?
Yes, I mean, and, uh, Mrs. Calucci was just sharing about the input from the, um, the subcommittees has not necessarily been in alignment with that. Um, so we certainly would want some more to gather some more data.
That has been brought up before though, not just by me.
Sure, and we did talk about it at the retreat, and we did go over some of those impacts from funding.
And some school divisions only use satellite plans. Throughout their division because they don't have a standalone school like we do. But, um, you know, I, I've just, it's just an idea and. You know, I won't be on the board in the future to make these decisions, but I'll certainly be a part of the community that can speak out about it.
All right, Ms. Franklin.
Thank you, and I can attest to all of the work that you all have been. Putting in for getting this plan ready for us, and I just thank you, thank you, thank you so much for your commitment to this. Um, I, I do want to just clarify, so on slide eleven. It says, in the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six O D S total seats. For grade three, a hundred fifty-six total seats, twenty-six more seats. Um, but I wanted to, I, I guess part of my, the reason I was kind of making the face is because I was a little bit confused. I understand the testing starting in grade two versus grade one, um, and all of that, but. Uh, right now, as of this school year, we have already converted the science lab to add the additional class. So, I'm a little confused about what is going to happen in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Are we with, because then we're going to have an additional third grade class, not, not really an additional third grade, but. We're going to have an additional fourth and fifth grade class. So, um, since we're going to, is it because the grade two classes are going to not happen? That we're going to have the additional classrooms, so we can re-convert the science lab back to a science lab?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood.
So the second grade has, currently has five classrooms. And those five classrooms would shift to those three through five.
Yes.
But we would subsume the one that was added from this school year so that the students can get their science lab back.
Okay, so, so that would actually happen earlier than expected by not testing.
Correct.
And doing the conversion to grade three through eight, okay. And then, I, I didn't really see in this, um, presentation. We had talked about a lot in the, the gifted committee about. Additional extensions, additional opportunities for field trips, I know that, that this is a lot, and you're just talking about some of the over. Um, haul that's going to happen into the program. But, um, just for those people watching, the community watching. Um, and those cons- concerns about our, you know, our clusters that we have right now. It is in the works to provide more extensions, to provide additional opportunities to the cluster groups. Um, and, and really expand on that cluster model, correct? Because we didn't really talk about that.
Yes, that's correct, so we will be working, um, collaboratively throughout the school year. Partnering with our old donation school as well as our, um, gifted cluster teachers, and we're going to have some ongoing learning walks. And collaborative work that they're going to be able to do to share resources, but we've also been developing, um, lessons. That are going to be able to be utilized, and it will be really, um, beneficial for the. Um, G R Ts that have the opportunity on our cluster models to be able to do those pull-out services. Because that's where they're going to really be able to take their skills when they are needing those accelerations and those extensions, and so. Um, students that might need to be extended just a little bit above grade level, some of them might need one or two grade levels. The G R Ts will be able to work with those students during that homogenous grouping when she does those pull-out services. To be able to provide those opportunities from that new curriculum. And they, um, they will be coming to our G CAC meeting and, um, our D T L team will be presenting and sharing some of that with them as well.
Good, and I think that one, uh, comment that was made by the O D S teachers. Was that they're excited about collaborating with the G R Ts because. Not, not only are the G R Ts going to learn from the O D S teachers, but vice versa. So they're going to also be able to pull some information out of that, so thank you again.
That's good, Mr. Callen.
Thank you both for the efforts that you have put forth to bring us this material, and because of the expansiveness of it. I would like to make a request. Can I get a copy of your notes so I can dive deep into it in order to make sure I'm processing it correctly? Thank you.
His fidelity is so real, thank, yes, no, I, I really appreciate it, it's really amazing that, that that was requested. And that you, to, to really understand that, because this was a lot of information tonight, and so I really appreciate that, Mr. Callen, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, thank you for all of the work, um, that you all have done, I know it hasn't been easy, um, at all, and I know there's a lot of moving pieces. Um, I'm sure that you're probably aware that we're getting a few emails, um, about the gifted plan. And, um, one in particular, um. References that the G CAC recommended to the school board in June twenty-twenty-four that a working group be assigned. What is the school board's response to this recommendation from G CAC? Um, off the top of my head, I'm not recalling that, um, but I was just curious if I could. Get some information from you guys about that.
Okay. There was, uh, when we did, um, when the G CAC presented their annual report. There's always a slide on there that allows the, the G CAC to present recommendations moving forward. And so we can go back and review that to make sure the wording, um, matches what you received. Um, and analyze what you received in your email, um, and get back to you on that.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, the other thing is, um, there's reference here to, um. The G CAC voting on six individual sections. And, um, making recommendations, and I see in the slideshow that it says administrative recommendation. But I am also curious, um, what the G CAC recommended on each of those, I, um. Just like you guys, I value their time and their input, and I, I would like to, um, have access to that information as well and. Perhaps follow up with some of my colleagues, um, for more conversation, but is that something that?
We can certainly provide that to you, and without knowing what email you're referencing, um, and what me, meeting they might have been, um, referencing. So, I'm, I'm guessing the meeting might have been our most recent meeting that we had in early August. Where they convened, uh, um, a special meeting where they were, um, asking to have an opportunity for new members. Who had just recently come on board to, um, talk through some of the components. Um, you know, the, the conversation, the, the agenda was long. And, uh, time went by really quickly, and so we did, we weren't able to get to all of the things, but I can certainly provide the board with what their feedback was. And all of those things have been taken into consideration, I do know that one of the, um. The input forms that we have gotten by one of our new G CAC members had some very positive things to say about. The opportunity to have had that meeting and talk through some things, um, she felt like it was, um, very beneficial, so I certainly am.
I'm happy to forward you, um.
Yeah.
And highlight the part that mentions it so that you don't have to filter through the whole email, but I will send that to you guys, so you know what I'm talking about. Thank you, I appreciate your work.
Ms. Owens, and then Ms. Williams.
Thank you. As everybody else has said, thank you for all of the work. It takes a lot to really be open to hearing all of the different opinions. And the different wordings that they may be coming at you, um, so we appreciate that. Uh, want to make sure that I, grasping all of it, with the, uh, expectation of. Starting at third grade now at O D S. Um, does that mean, uh, obviously not testing our second graders this year because they were just tested last year? So this will be the only year that we have no large group testing, it'll only be, uh, parents who are maybe new to the district. Or applying again, and then we will start that large group testing again the following school year, is that correct?
For second grade, we still will have, um, large group testing in our fifth grade with our N net. Because we do that screening in fifth grade every year, so, yes, this year will kind of be a little bit of a lull. Because if, if that, um, change is adopted, and then it would resume again, of course, next year with the, the new plan.
Okay, very nice, I'm, I'm hoping that, not that there's not plenty of other things that our G R Ts and, uh, staff are doing. But that they'll have a little time to, you know, dig more into classrooms or just to catch up and breathe. With the, the normal workload, so, thank you.
Thank you ladies, um, this is a tough subject with a lot of opinions and a lot of passion. So, um, on slide A with, um, part three, the highest rated applicant from each school's rising third grade. So I appreciate this, this appears to me to be a compromise because we had talked about one from every school, and, and so this, this appears. To be, to be a good compromise. My question is, how do you decide who's the highest rated applicant of that school? Because I remember having discussions and I was, would often say, well, why can't you just, you know, put them in a list, one through, and this is the highest. No, no, we can't do that because it's five-five-five, so. Are we going to be in the same boat when we have ten with the exact same score at a school, are we going to go to random selection? And that needs to be advertised, um, because it, or, or can we somehow get to? Why can't we identify top applicants? And, and I know the answer to that, but go ahead.
So, the answer to your question is yes, if it were, if there were multiple students that fell within that range of top applicants from a school. Then we would do a random selection from that, and then they would, um, of course, the, the students that weren't selected from that school would then be. Put into the selection of random selection for the overall selection. But again, um, we, we do feel that we would be able to, and you can't make any guarantees, we would be able to accomplish. Uh, um, accomplish, making sure that all those students have an opportunity that were in that highest, um, category. Especially with those additional seats being added to grade three.
The hypothesis here is, the data we've studied except for the year we were four-four-four. The number of kids getting a five-five-five has never exceeded a hundred. So, yes, in essence, we're going to have kids at a particular school, we'll have fifteen kids get a five-five-five. One of those kids will get drawn automatically, and the other fourteen will, will get in on the next. Based upon the data we've had over years.
Okay, well, yeah. Yeah, well, that's why, yeah, so many of us wanted to change that rating, and I just do appreciate that and all your hard work, um.
And that's why we paused and reconsidered doing that.
Yes, very excellent, excellent, thank you.
So I'll just end with, thank you for making this a community school first. And I, that is one thing that I really appreciate. That there will be repres- at least one student from each school. Because last year there was an elementary school that had zero in attendance. But that didn't mean that somebody from that school didn't deserve to be there, and so. It, it just makes me really happy, you've, you, this is a community school first, and I'm really grateful for that, so. Anybody else?
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. And now here comes Mr. Right or Mr. Left? Mr. Jack Freeman, our chief operations officer. On our new construction guidance and direction, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Glad that's sticking, that's good. Good evening, Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. When we met during our school board retreat in July, we told you we'd be coming back to you to receive direction. On the order of priority for the next two new construction schools. To effectively receive that direction from this elected body, it is most appropriate to receive your guidance through an action item. So with that as a goal, we shared this brief with you during the workshop on August thirteenth, and we're back today with an information item. And this is scheduled for action next meeting. So let's start with some history, uh, two thousand seven and eight was our first long-range facility master plan. In two thousand eight and nine, Prince Sam High School showed up as a replacement project in the capital program. In seventeen eighteen, we conducted the second long-range facility master plan, we're on track to do that every ten years. And then in twenty twenty-one, Williams Bayside Six showed up as a replacement project in the capital program. And in twenty-three, twenty-four, we went through a P P A process with over thirty community meetings, uh, community and school meetings. So for this year, starting in January tenth, we came back to you with the thirty percent designs uh as part of the PPEA. And then on March twelfth, uh the school board adopted the capital program. On April sixteenth, we came back to you with the designs related to Williams and Bayside Six to get guidance and feedback. We took that and then we came back to you uh later that month, actually on uh May fourteenth. On May twenty eighth, we gave you a capital uh CIP maintenance projects overview. And then on June tenth, we did a similar uh process that we did with Williams and Bayside Six, we just did it with Prince Sam High School. And then we got your, uh we gave you feedback on that at the retreat on July tenth. And then we also gave you the new construction, uh the comprehensive new construction update on July tenth at the retreat as well. The task at hand is for the board to decide the order for the next two new construction projects in the capital program. Will it be Williams Bayside Six or some version of that, or will it be Prince Sam High School? Here is the flow chart that is intended to help simplify the process. You can see the we are here in red in the middle, staff needs direction. For example, do we go to the Williams side of the flow chart or the Prince Sam High School side? If we go to the Williams side, then at a later time, we will need direction for whether we'll be building a four five school or a four five six school. Once we know that, staff can then finalize the educational specifications to bear prepare for a bid in twenty twenty six. If building a four or five school, we will need to discuss how to proceed with the students at Bayside Six. And if Williams is next, it will be a good idea to ensure that we're all around a plan for Holland Road Annex. If the board were to choose Prince Sam High School as the next priority school, there is a similar process, including a potential decision for students at Bayside Six. And following our discussion during the last meeting, we've added an additional item to the flow chart. And that is, if Princess Sam High School is selected as the priority school, should we continue with the tri-campus model? Or is there a better model to support those students? With all that said, we need to keep this as simple as possible and focus on the task at hand. Staff needs to know whether we're going with Williams or some variation or with Prince Sam High School. Are we going right or are we going left? Everything below that will be resolved by continuing to work through the problem and solving the other items sequentially. This is not the time to dive deep on any of the items grayed out, it's not the time to talk about wishes for the design of the buildings, it's not the time to talk about rightsizing, and it's not the time to talk about programs in the building. Between now and the action item, we encourage you to focus on the information related to going right or left. Everything grayed out can and will be solved as needed depending upon whether we go right or left. So continuing with our history, we conduct long-range facility master plans every ten years, first was in oh seven oh eight, the next was in seventeen eighteen and we're on track to complete the next one in twenty seven twenty. On the left, you can see the schools prioritized during the oh seven oh eight plan. All of those have been resolved except for Prince Sam High School. Prince Sam has been a project in the capital program since then. On the right, you can see the results of the seventeen eighteen long-range facilities conditions. Ms. Owens, good catch on the opening date for Williams. This graphic is a snapshot from the long-range facility master plan in nineteen sixty-three was listed in era. We struck that date and added nineteen sixty-one in red. Now go to the far right column and you'll see the total condition index. Higher numbers are worse and schools are listed from worse to less worse. So Old Aragona, our current Bayside Six scores the worst. Because we have a solution for Bayside Six under either new construction op- option, we won't focus on that building. Prince Sam High School scores the second worst and Williams scores the seventh worst from a total condition index perspective. Alright, let's go one and two columns over. There you can see the educational adequacy factor and the school facility condition index. These are the two measures which are combined to make the total condition index. Under the school facility condition index, Prince Sam High School ranks third and Williams fourth, so those are really close. Ms. Brown, you asked if either of these buildings is structurally unsound compared to the other. The comparison you're asking about is contained in the facilities condition index and both schools score similarly. And we can talk during Q and A if you want to discuss more about that. The educational adequacy is really where the difference is. Prince Sam High School scored the worst of all the schools at number one and Williams was tenth. According to total condition index, Prince Sam High School is the second worst behind Bayside Six and Williams is seventh. Ms. Franklin, you asked for more detail about the facilities condition index and educational adequacy factor. FCI considers age and condition of individual systems and examples of those are on the second bullet. Individual system scores are combined to determine the FCI. Educational adequacy is an industry standard to assess how the building meets educational program delivery needs and you can see an example list of those items are included. Scores are combined to determine the campus EAF. In addition to the work of the long-range facility master plan, Virginia Beach City Public School Maintenance Team took another look at the two buildings. And they noted critical systems like roofing, HVAC, electrical and plumbing pose the greatest risk when deferring maintenance. And deferred maintenance is projected to be most costly at Prince Sam High School. When we put schools in the capital program for replacement, we've become very focused on not wasting money on fixes and upgrades that may only be in place for several years. For example, we wouldn't want to spend millions of dollars replacing an entire functioning but finicky HVAC system. So we do whatever is a reasonable balance of risk to maintain a suitable environment in the building without large capital allowances. We call this deferred maintenance. When Prince Sam High School was first listed in the capital program in oh eight oh nine, we began the process of deferred maintenance. That was fifteen years ago. If Williams is selected as the priority replacement project, we would need to continue deferring maintenance at Prince Sam, Prince Sam High School for another fourteen years. There are fourteen building systems being monitored at Prince Sam High School to prevent failure. This includes well-known concerns like roof, thirty-two HVAC units, fire systems and pump station components for sewage. It is difficult to project the costs needed to address the failures we can expect during that time. There are just too many uncertainties. However, we are confident that continuing to defer maintenance on Prince Sam High School will cost at least twice as much as deferred maintenance at Williams. Williams first made it into the capital program four years ago and when we've been deferring maintenance on those systems for about four years. If Prince Sam High School is selected as the priority replacement project, we estimate an additional sixteen years of deferred maintenance at Williams. There are twelve building systems being monitored to be to prevent failure. There are similar systems at Prince Sam High School, they're just smaller due to the smaller size of the school. For example, you can see that there's HVAC, eight HVAC systems compared to Prince Sam High School's thirty-two. We estimate it will cost less than half as much to defer maintenance at Williams when compared to Prince Sam High School. From a deferred maintenance perspective, there's more risk at Prince Sam High School than at Williams and a corresponding potential for greater cost to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. You saw this slide of the retreat, this projects the debt service impact from uh for Williams and Bayside Six. The red line is our current fifty million dollar debt service limit. If Williams was chosen as the priority school, we would need to increase the debt service by two million dollars per year for five consecutive years, starting no later than FY thirty. You saw this slide at the retreat as well, this projects the debt service impact for Prince Sam High School. If that was chosen as the priority school, that service would need to be increased by three point eight million dollars for seven con- consecutive years, starting no later than FY twenty-eight. And we showed you some things to consider at the retreat indicating that this was achievable. We mentioned at the retreat the need to think strategically, let's not isolate our analysis and thinking to just one school in the next several years. Let's look at what the math says about not just doing the next school, but the next two schools. This is a new slide, you saw it at the uh at our last meeting. Davenport ran the numbers and developed these graphs and they're similar in format to the previous two. But now they depict the impact on debt service when you do Williams first, then Prince Sam High School, and that's the graph on the left. Or if you do Prince Sam High School, then Williams, and that's the graph on the right. Let's start on the left with Williams. The dark green bars are debt we have already incurred and we're paying down. The light green is the debt we would incur on the first school, and that's Williams in this graph. The light green also accounts for keeping our maintenance project funding indexed for inflation. And the blue bars are debt resulting from the second school being built, Prince Sam High School on this graph. The graph on the right shows the data for the scenario with Prince Sam High School going first and Williams second. The dark green bars are the same, light green is now Prince Sam High School and maintenance, and the light blue is Williams. I know the numbers are small and challenging to read, but even visually, it's easy to see the impact. Look at the slope of the debt service increase on the left and compare them to the right. On the left, the top five years of debt service increase requirements are twelve million, twenty million, sixteen million, twenty-two million and fifteen million. Those are increases over consecutive years and those are from thirty-nine to forty-three. On the right, the top five years of debt service increase requirements are seven million, thirteen million, eight million, twelve million and four million. And those are also from thirty-nine to forty-three. And in FY forty-five, at the completion of the second project, the debt service requirements is projected to be twenty-five million dollars less in the Prince Sam High School first example. We told you at the retreat to focus on the debt service and that staff can sort out the allocations and that is still true. But because we're an organization in interested in spending taxpayer dollars wisely and responsibly, we should understand the consequences of going with Williams first or Prince Sam High School first. And the Williams first scenario on the left, total allocations required after the second school is built is estimated to be through seven hundred and thirty-five million dollars. That's the number in red below the graph. And the Prince Sam High School first scenario on the right, total allocations required after the second school is built is estimated to be five hundred and eighteen million dollars. Again, that's the number in red below the graph. The difference in estimated allocations between the two scenarios is over two hundred million dollars. We did get a question about decreasing inflation, about how decreasing inflation could affect these calculations. The question seemed to be correlated with recently published articles about annual inflation rates slowing. Those articles were referenced Consumer Price Index from the US Bureau of Labor and Statistics. CPI measures the average change over time in prices paid by urban consumers for a market basket of consumer goods. When you go to a grocery store, the prices that you pay are in CPI. The inflation numbers that we use are from the Producer Price Index for new school construction sector, which measures the changes in output prices for new school construction. This is national level dat- data that is aligned with the data we are interested in, school construction rather than items like groceries. This is a slide you've seen before. The bars in orange represent PPI for the new school construction sector and shows historical data. The bars in yellow are projections for new school construction cost escalation. We've received outside support each of the last two years to estimate these numbers. These numbers were derived using local and state new school construction data. These calculations extend through the six-year CIP. In all of the previous uh slides, starting in FY thirty, three percent annual inflation is used in those calculations. So all of the previous bar graphs use three percent inflation starting in FY thirty. You can see that it ends at year six and the CIP at six point two one and then it drops on the years outside of that to three percent for those calculations. That's the most up-to-date information we have on finances, any decision like this should consider our students and our values say that we put students first. There are likely many different qualitative lenses to look through, let's try and quantify the impact. We're all familiar with man-hours of work, five people working on a job for two hours is ten man-hours of work. And you can do a similar calculation for student years of impact. Williams serves two grade levels and about four hundred students each year. We project the population is gonna decrease to about three hundred, but we kept the number at four hundred just for a worst-case scenario. So with four hundred total students remaining in the building for an additional twelve years, that's forty-eight hundred student years of impact if Williams is not selected as the next priority school. The other student impact is the individual student impact. If a student was to spend two years of their thirteen-year Virginia Beach City Public School career at this older building, that would represent about fifteen percent of their career. Prince Sam High School has four grade levels with a total of seventeen hundred students and that's regular and special education. Seventeen hundred students times twelve years gives twenty thousand four hundred student years of impact if Prince Sam High School is not selected as the priority school. The individual student impact is four years at an aging Prince Sam High School building which represents thirty-one percent of their thirteen-year Virginia Beach City Public School career. Again, we can have questions about or discussions about qualitative impact uh in those two scenarios. This exercise is intended to quantify the impact on individual students and groups of students who would be impacted by this decision. Ms. Kendrick, we received your question at the workshop about using the Aragona property currently Bayside Six and the calculation of student years of impact and deferred maintenance. Choosing between Williams or some version of it or Prince Sam High School with our current guidance is an either-or decision. Once one school is chosen, we are locked into financing which will take time before we can address the second school. That is not the case with Bayside Six. The board was briefed in April, the capacity exists at Bayside Middle School to accommodate those sixth-grade students like we do at every other middle school in our division. So it doesn't make sense to simply calculate the sixth-grade students remaining in the Aragona property until FY forty-one and like like the other comparisons. The school board could direct at any time for staff to develop a plan to vacate the Aragona property and put those students back into Bayside Middle School. So to fairly respond to the question, we needed to go a little bit deep and what I'm about to share with you will be challenging to absorb the first time you hear it, but we'll go slow. Because Bayside Six isn't isn't an either-or decision like Williams and Prince Sam High School, it made more sense to break out the student years of impact by individual years. Bayside Six currently supports about three hundred and fourteen students. But we briefed you on the projected increases in the population in that area. We needed to pick a reasonable number for our calculation, so we chose four hundred and fifty. In the early years, this will result in an overestimation of impact. To attempt this uh to attempt to include this building in the comparison, we need to keep the same baseline year which is FY twenty-eight twenty-nine. So by comparison, if the school board directed these students to be moved to Bayside Middle prior to that year, again, by comparison, there would be a savings in student years of impact. And you can see that in the chart. There are two scenarios which would create comparable impact at Bayside Six beyond FY twenty-eight and twenty-nine. The first scenario would occur if the school board decided to build a Williams four or five school first and save money by not including a sixth-grade wing in the current design. And then choosing not to move sixth-grade students out of the Aragona property and into Bayside Middle School. The second scenario would be if the school board chose Prince Sam High School as the next new construction school and the board and the board decided not to move sixth-grade students from the Aragona property into Bayside Middle School. So if one of those two scenarios occurred and the school board chose not to and chose them to continue to leave the sixth-grade students in the Aragona property, you can see the yearly cumulative impact of that scenario. With the school board leaving sixth-grade students in the Aragona property up through FY twenty-nine thirty, that would result in four hundred and fifty comparative student years of impact. FY thirty-one thirty thirty-one, nine hundred comparative and cumulative student years of impact. FY thirty-one, thirty, thirty-one, nine hundred comparative and cumulative student years of impact. We took this all the way out to FY forty, forty-one to align with the comparison from the previous slide. To get to a scenario where Bayside students remained in the Aragona property would be an active decision by the board for that to be a preferable option over moving students to Bayside Middle School in alignment with all of the other Virginia Beach City Public Schools, middle schools. Alright, again, so when hearing for the first time, I know it's challenging to follow. We tried to fairly answer the question, realizing that it doesn't compare as easily as the Williams and Prince and High School comparison. The other comparison is the individual impact of a student spending one year of the potential thirteen-year Virginia Beach City Public School career at the Aragona property, and that's about eight percent. And you can see how those numbers stack up from the previous slides, so I'll leave this up here, a quick snapshot of everybody for what these numbers say. And those are best when compared to the other numbers, so you can see that twenty thousand four hundred Prince and High School and forty-eight hundred at Williams. And for the effect on deferred maintenance at the Aragona property, ten building systems are being monitored to prevent failure. The process of comparison is similar to the last slide. FY twenty-eight, twenty-nine is the baseline year from the Williams and Prince and High School comparison. So any move of the sixth-grade students prior to that would be a savings comparatively. Again, the same scenarios from the previous example would need to occur for students to remain in that building year over year. And the comparison cost to continue to maintain that building is about half the annual cost to maintain Prince and High School. But that decision is not limited to keeping students in the Aragona property until forty, forty-one, the school board could decide on that at any time. The last topic for today is the tri-campus model. Mrs. Manning shared concerns about the number of transitions for the tri-campus students at the last meeting. Students at the tri-campus transition every two years from Diamond Springs to Newtown to Williams. In two thousand four, a task force began considering the tri-campus model, and in two thousand seven, when Diamond Springs finished construction, the model was implemented. In FY twenty-twenty-one, Williams and Bayside Six entered the capital program to follow Prince and High School. Because there was a PPEA on the table that had the potential to accelerate construction, we conducted community input meetings in FY twenty-two to get community feedback about Williams, Bayside Six, and the tri-campus. That feedback was considered when the school board directed staff to design Williams under the tri-campus model and include Bayside Six in the new building. It would be appropriate to readdress this question prior to proceeding with a Williams project of any type. If the school board were to direct staff to develop a plan to move away from the tri-campus model, it would be essential for that to occur prior to proceeding any further with Williams designs and educational specifications. There are other alternatives that would need to be considered. Alright, now we're almost ready to open this up for questions and discussion. Remember, staff is seeking your direction. We just need to know whether we're gonna go right or left. Once we know that, we can progress through all of the other necessary steps that are great out here. After today, the next step is action on September tenth, and we will now take your questions.
Ms. Anderson?
Hang on just a second, I need to get back to that page. Okay, it's actually the second page. Under the second page where it says Princess Anne High School Replacement Project on the right, and below that it says Bayside Six students question mark, and below that it says tri-campus model changes. So, the scenario was put forth that we think about only having two schools for those students instead of three.
Ma'am, ma'am, I don't believe that came up in our discussion that we had last week.
Oh, that's not what this is about? That's not what this tri-campus model change means?
I'm just clarifying that in an open meeting last week, we did not talk anything about-
No, we did not. No, we did not, okay. Okay, but it could be talked about if we decide to go on the right, to the right, at a future date. No, Princess Anne High School Replacement Project, that's on the right.
That is where it shows up in the flow chart, yes.
So my vote will be to go to Princess Anne High School Replacement Project on the right. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Riggs.
I was in here at the last meeting, I'm just seeing this and saw it after the fact. I like that idea. I think it's prudent. I mean, you've shared that with this presentation to move forward if we're looking at and being fiscally responsive, responsible. It's a no-brainer to go to Princess Anne High School, and I think that's been the plan all along. I don't think you guys, and it wasn't you, people before you have drug their feet and not done this in the right way, but you guys have gone immensely into it for us. I can't imagine thinking any other way but to go to the right. If we're going to be responsible for our taxpayers, our students, the whole nine yards, that's the only thing that makes sense to me.
Mr. Callan?
I'm gonna maintain the pattern I've been on for a while, Jack. But before I go there, I'm gonna ask you a question in reference to page ten, where we have the two bar graphs side by side. The information in red underneath the Betty F. Williams goes first of seven hundred and thirty-five million, and the comparison in red under the Princess Anne High School first of five hundred and eighteen million. Let me make sure that I heard you correctly. Those numbers in red, if I heard you, said that that represents the total allocations after the second school is built. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Let me make a note. The next question I have is because we're addressing the tri-campus scenario, Bayside Sixth Grade Campus, and the new information that was contained therein. I'd like to chew on that again, so can I have your notes for the information that pertains to those pages?
Absolutely.
I have to chew it slowly.
Mike, which part was that again?
What he said.
Oh, okay. Ms. Owens?
Thank you. I want this to be like clear-cut, but I look at the information provided, and I'm like, oh, okay, it's obvious that we're gonna lean one way or the other, and it unfortunately is still not feeling that obvious or clear to me. When I look at the information provided with the facility conditions, and we look at the educational adequacy factors, I understand what they are looking at when they're making those, I understand somewhat. It looks obviously very complicated because we have the numbers and the decimal system there for how they're rating those. But, hearing that the educational adequacy factor doesn't take into consideration actual educational achievement that's happening in the two buildings, and any disproportionality that may deserve to be weighed in the equation is a consideration for me when we're looking at achievements and areas of need in our city. When I think about the quantitative and qualitative impacts for the Princess Anne School, I also have to weigh in that our high school students who are zoned for Princess Anne High School have eleven other options that they can apply to to have other places where they may be. They can be at the Math and Science Academy, the Performing Arts, the Legal Academy, the Business Academy, Green Run Collegiate, STEM, the Medical Program, International Studies, ATC, there are lots of options. Doesn't mean that they're going to necessarily get in, but that they have those presented to that community, Princess Anne Districted Community for that age group. The families in Bayside have zero additional options of where their students may choose to go and choose to attend. And so, I have to weigh that. It's not a cut-and-dry for me. I don't fully understand why there isn't a plan like C on the table that says this hundred and five million-dollar budget that it would cost for the Betty F. Williams rebuild to do it for like sixty million by just putting some wings on one of the two schools that are already there, the tri-campus, and then putting the money that we saved towards the Princess Anne so that we're able to service more students at a faster rate. Obviously, I'm not an architect, and I don't know how all of that would play into budgeting and making that happen, but if we're concerned about the number of transitions that the tri-campus is having, and we have the ability, because we already own that land, to put two wings or put a wing on one of those buildings that we already have there, it seems, again, not an architect, not a finance person, this is the social work view of it, seems like you don't have to build a whole brand-new school, but you only need to build half a school, that maybe we could have half or three-quarters of that budget and use it for something else. And so I just hope that as we are moving forward, we're considering the options that some students in the community are gonna have versus where there aren't options for others, and how that all plays into the big picture. So, thank you.
Mr. Cole-Petter?
Um, let's see, it's kinda funny, I say something very different. What I was gonna say, Jack, is this is a very complex problem that is very hard to quantify. And you really did, I agree with what Ms. Riggs said to you, that kinda went through the extra effort here to find a way to quantify it in several different ways to what appears to be a self-evident answer, although the things that Ms. Owens said are interesting. But I think those are in the gray box, as you described it up there. You know, once we make a decision where to start, there are a lot of details that matter and what can go on, and also appreciate, as Mr. Callan pointed out on slide eleven, the cost savings in the long run of completing both projects. I think that's significant. So thank you for the effort to quantify this and then affect a way to evaluate, appreciate it.
Ms. Williams? No, Ms. Brown, sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation and left-right. I still don't know. So, and I do wanna clarify something, just because there was a couple of comments, I don't want the public to have any confusion because there's already conversation that there's people talking behind the scenes in closed session about this. We did not discuss other options in closed or open session. So I just wanted to make sure that the public is aware of that. In the last meeting, it was alluded to that there was other potential options. I kind of feel like I would wanna know what those options are. And, the other thing is, when I look at slide nine and ten, and it kind of goes into slide eleven that Mr. Callan brought up before. In slide nine, it says that we would need to put annual incremental increases in the debt service budget for five consecutive years in fiscal year twenty-thirty of two million. Then for Princess Anne, it talks about doing this at a amount of three-point-eight million in fiscal year of twenty-twenty-eight, two years sooner, and one-point-eight million more dollars per year, and so I kind of and I would hope that these charts take that into account, but if I'm putting three-point-eight million dollars into something with an interest rate two years sooner, the snowball effect of that is going to be greater, and so I'm really curious how that plays into this here.
This year, maybe by this year?
No, this here.
This here?
Yes.
So, the comparison you're talking about is, I think, what's represented in this slide. As you mentioned, the snowball effect, I can't remember, were you here at the last meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I rarely ever miss meetings, so.
So this goes into the concept that I talked about related to the financial planning and whether you start saving when you're twenty years old, whether you start saving when you're forty. And so what happens is when you, the snowball effect that you're talking about is on the left, if you start comparatively smaller with the adjustments, it builds up. So then you have to make larger adjustments in the later years. So that was the slide where I got to where I was sharing the from thirty-nine to forty-three, I think it was, where you had twenty-million-dollar bumps on two years, and the other ones were in the mid-teens. So rather than two million or three-point-eight, that school board at that time, if they wanted to do this plan for that second school, would need to not have a three-point-eight-million-dollar bump. They would need to have over a twenty-million-dollar bump, not once but twice, and those would be combined with some other significant bumps. So to your question about the snowballing and using the reference of, hey, if you start when you're twenty, your rate of savings can be lower, and you can still come out way ahead of somebody who started later in life. That's the graph on the right. Rather than starting with two million dollars a year for five years a little bit later, started a little bit earlier in twenty-eight with three-point-eight million dollars, and that makes a smaller, smoother line, and it takes less allocations to build the same schools.
So what if we were to put away or do something with three-point-eight million dollars earlier instead and go the other direction? And so there's the problem that I arrive at, is if we can do it for this right, if we can go right and put three-point-eight million into it, and we can go left and put three-point-eight million into it, do we end up with a similar result?
So that's a fair question, and I think they're gonna be in similar ballparks, because the important part of it is putting that money away. So, if we were to stay on the same timeline for making those increases, I think it would be roughly similar. Now, that's, realize, I'm talking off the cuff. But it makes sense that that would occur. So, whenever you do things, you have to take the theory and then put it into reality.
Right.
So the reality of what you describe is we would be way overfunding debt service every year. So you would be requiring Crystal's team every year to put massively more towards debt service. They take it right off the top, and that's money that school board would not be able to have, in theory, not be able to have access to.
But we wouldn't have access to it anyway if we did it for Princess Anne.
So fair.
Yeah.
The human nature of the two is when the rubber meets the road, and you start looking at that annual plan, can a, I wanna say, can a group of eleven people come to agreement that we're not gonna touch that? We're gonna leave that alone, we're not gonna dip into it. And I say that with a backdrop of what happened with school construction money and the Virginia Lottery. When the rubber met the road, it was really hard to say, we're not gonna touch that massive amount of money that's sitting over there. When the rubber met the road, it was really hard, and it was like, hey, let's go take some of that money, and we're feeling that now. So, I think what you're describing from a mass standpoint is fair. I think there are challenges related to the execution of that.
Right. Okay, I appreciate that. So when I went to both schools, I went to Princess Anne, and I did notice that much of Princess Anne is newer, and then there's an older portion. And when I went to Williams, I did view a video of a pipe that can only temporarily be patched up that shot water at a kid while they were washing their hands. And, you know, I also am aware that there's asbestos under the carpeting, and that carpet is- That carpet is not far away um from where that restroom is and so. You know, I I have some concerns. I have some concerns about that and I I think that um that is what is. Preventing me from being able to easily make a decision here, um because I I did not see that same type of. Stuff that I would be concerned about at Princess Anne and again, I know that there's what I saw. And then there's what's going on, um and you know, they were built generally around the same timeframe, so so I'm sure there's. Some coverings, um but um anyway. I I am concerned that you know, there's carpet covering asbestos. I- in that school and that there may be moisture. Um and I'm concerned about moisture turning into mold and um the potential health. Problems that that could potentially cause, um and so those are my my thoughts. Um and then on a final note, um a colleague did mention, um and I do have the floor, thank you. A colleague mentioned that, you know, we we have to be good fiscal stewards and fiscally responsible and that's true. And I'm not gonna bring up specifics for the buildings, but I wouldn't say that I believe that any of these buildings proposed are um fiscally responsible. Thank you.
So if I may, there's a couple of things that the public will need to hear and we should be clear on that that came up, there's a lot there, so um. Something to realize and I and I appreciate that uh many of you have done walkthroughs of the building. So we mentioned uh the number of building systems that we were monitoring uh in here. And when you walk through, you get to see a couple of them. The walls, the floors, things that you can see are essentially a a building system. And there are many others. What can't be seen when you do the building walkthrough, that all gets contributed towards the uh facility condens- condition index. What does the roof look like? What what's the adequacy of the roof, what's the HVAC systems, what's the status? What's this sys- uh related to pump systems, which affects our uh our sewage? There are experts that have done that for two different long range facility master plans. And they combine all those together into a facility condition index. So while I appreciate the the perspective of a walkthrough, that only observes from a layman perspective. And I'm a layman as well, that's a layman's perspective about the building system that you're able to observe, which is. The physical space that you're standing in and there are so many other elements that are part of that assessment. So. You've mentioned asbestos, so we're gonna we're gonna talk about it. Asbestos from a tile standpoint and from most other standpoints is a problem when disrupted. There's a reason that those things are still in our buildings because they are safe as long as they're properly handled and we have an asbestos management program. Uh through our environmental uh program. So carpet is over it, prevent disturbing that. To keep the environment safe, it wasn't until nineteen eighty nine. Until there was a standard in buildings to not include asbestos. Nineteen eighty nine, we have a number of buildings that are older than nineteen eighty nine. Williams is not the only building that contains asbestos, we have a really good asbestos made and management program. We have building managers that understand where that is and are able to communicate. Don't disturb the areas where that asbestos may be and if it's needed to, then we need to make sure that all of the proper protocols are followed to keep everybody safe. So that is not just a condition that exists at Williams and we have a very good asbestos management program to prevent any hazards.
I appreciate that explanation, thank you.
Absolutely.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you, um well, I agree with my colleagues who who. You say this is a tough decision because by it it is not clear cut for me at all. So on slide six, I think it is the long range facilities master plan. Will you um refresh me when it says the school facility condition index and it's got. Old Aragona, Bayside Six as one number one.
I'm trying to get there, but.
Yeah, can you refresh me exactly what that means real quickly?
That would mean that that scored the worst of the buildings on that list.
Okay, and it seems like it's the the two, three and four are kinda close together and then there's a big jump to me to eight eighty. Is that a correct observation?
So under school facility condition index, you're saying uh two, three and four are close.
Yeah, seven forty five, seven twenty four, seven fifty, and then there's eight eighty, that seems like. It's kind of.
Oh, you're saying there's a big difference between one and then the ones that that fall after, sure.
Okay, okay, so that's that I think we need to remember that. I agree with Ms. Owens, I was, it's and I'm not gonna call it right or left, I'm gonna call it A or B, but I wanted them to be. There needs to be a C for me to choose between A and B. Because depending on what the C was is was is there another option to do wings? To reconfigure K one, two, three, four, five or keep a K, I mean, there's just so much. And so I was really hoping that we would get, I miss Owen said a C that would help me um make this decision. That's very, it's very difficult without that because there will be a C. I I imagine, we just don't have it and we're not talking about it now.
Yeah, so the the point to that is those all can be resolved uh through the process. And so, for example, if the school board directed us to build a four, five, six Williams school. We wouldn't need to have that conversation about the tri campus.
Right, but if the school board says, oh, wait, uh maybe we could not even build, maybe we could add wings and put that money. I mean, that's that's a bid, maybe we could do K one, two, three, four, five, save the money, add the wings. I mean, so that's just.
So that's the, that's why that tri campus model is part of the flow chart, so if the school board were to direct us, so. That's gonna take time.
I know. But it's I it's a big if, it's a big C to make a decision between A and B and we have this unknown unthing that we can't. That we're not talking about it until we decide A and B, but for me, C makes it makes a difference on what I choose.
So so another thing to consider, we we follow the direction of the board. I'm I'm going back to this and I I don't wanna overstate this, time is money. So what you're suggesting is the potential of can we delay building. Or designing the first school and go through the process of discussing what the tri canvas model would look like. Which would further push our schools out into the future. That is an option, the school board could choose to do that. There's an option where we continue to stay on timeline whilst going through that work. And being able to get to the same goal.
So if we, but it but if we decide to go to A, B F Williams, Bayside Six. Then you're saying it could look completely different than that, both in in the building and in the money. I mean, completely different, like uncomparable is depending on what we choose. Adding wings is less expensive and I would think, and I'm not architect, but maybe we can start a new business together. Um I would think that would be a lot less expensive than building a whole new building, so that it's gonna have a big financial diff- it's gonna be look differently perhaps. Or it could look the same, but financially and um delivery of services and all that stuff.
So I've I've heard uh several of you mention uh building wings. What I would say is if you wanna change the tri campus model. Rather than focusing on a specific way to fix it. That you would, if you wanted to go that path, you would direct staff that we want you to improve the tri campus model. We don't like the number of transitions, go develop a plan and come back to us, which improves that, that may or may not. It may have an option where there are wings, it may have some other options. That might resolve it in a way that you have not anticipated.
Well, I know and I don't wanna find that out after I pick A or B and then say, oh, I should have, I should have not done that because now you've bring me just a great thing that I didn't even think of. So that's that's my problem, uh I'll stop talking.
No, that's a fair, so if somebody were to choose Williams Bayside Six, we're saying that we're sticking with the tri campus model and we're putting six in that building.
That's correct. Yeah, if you tell him that right now, that's exactly what you're saying.
So if we go with Betty F. Williams, that's saying that we're building a four, five school there.
That's correct.
Without other direction.
A four, five school there.
It could be four, five or four, five, six, you would need to tell us that next. That that would be next to the decision if we went there. But Ms. Williams, to your point, if if that was the road that you wanted to go down, that leaves two options. The option is is to continue delay and costs go up. Or it's keep a project moving while staff does the work to be able to solve the problem that you wanna have solved.
Well, yeah, and you you phrase it continue to delay, I wanna phrase it, continue to investigate so we make the right decision.
So if my colleagues don't mind, um it's no, no, Ms. Ms. Ke- no. I'm so sorry, I love you, but it's Ms. Kendrick's turn because she has not spoken, so I'm gonna bump her above you and Ms. Owens if that's okay.
Well, thank you, Chair Melnick. And thank you, this um information that was provided. I mean, we uh you've done a thorough job and it's clear, based on the data that you've provided to us. That both schools are in really bad shape. They both are, they both need attention, they both need to have a solution. And you know, we're talking about time is money. But I know that with one choice, the way that you presented it, especially on slide eight. A decision, there is time, that means one school has to wait thirty more years before something can be done. Or another school has to wait twenty years before something can be done. I don't um. I don't wanna look our constituents in the face and knowing that we had them wait either for either decision that long. I liked, I like what was shared by my colleagues about uh an option C. I think there, if there is a way for us to address both school needs. We should at least look at it and the tri campus model, you know, you you said improve the tri campus model. And it might not be the wing option, it might be something else. Because the decision that we make will be long term, either a twenty year decision or thirty year decision. I think we owe it to at least look at an option C to where both can win. We can do, if there's a way for us to add or change the tri campus model. And also fund the Princess Anne High School project, then we need to look at that. Because I don't want us to say that one is worse off than the other. Um because I'm sure the students at Princess Anne High School feel that they need something new and improved. And I know because the of the constituents in my district, I know everywhere I go. They wanna see something done with Betty F. Williams. But I also wanna be mindful of the Princess Anne High School students too. And so if we're able to at least take a little more time, Mister Freeman. To see what that tri campus model could be, it might just take another. You know, it might be the next time after September tenth, which is my birthday, by the way. We might need to take one more session, but if one more session can get us a solution for both schools, then can we please consider it? And I don't, I don't know because, you know, you're the expert, we're not. But we're trying to do what's best for our constituents, all of them, so I I would like for us to consider. Not a right or a left, not an A or a B, but perhaps a C to where both. We can meet all needs if it's possible, thank you.
So I'm gonna s- push myself in between you two and three of you now and say, we did have an option. That addressed all of those needs and that was called the P P E A and I'm sorry that did not work out. But time is money and eh I I thought we were gonna vote today on right or left. Because we're pushing this down the road again and this is. This is continuing to grow every single day. The P P E A included Princess Anne, Betty F. Four, Five, Six. And conditions remo- I mean, ki- getting this swing space ready. For the new inhabitants of that room, of that school and so. I'm telling you, somebody needs to bring some something quick quickly because. Even if we green lighted this today, there's a process of like two years before even this is even gonna get going. And so, you know, there's still designs, there's still site work, there's still the actual construction of the building. And we're, I mean, we we need to move on this, so I thought we were voting, I'm gonna now yield to the three people who already spoke. But um it appears that we have options in the Bayside District. And then I just wanna remind you that there are five hundred kids inside of Princess Anne High School that came from other school districts. So while some have choices to leave, we're also shipping in five hundred a day that would be in a different building. So either way, that 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 part washes out, so. Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. I I agree, thank you, Ms. Williams, for coming up with a Plan C. Uh well, well, for bringing up that 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 we actually need a Plan C. I would feel much better about knowing that there is a Plan C of building two wings. Or one wing or whatever it's gonna take, but I honestly believe in, this is one of those few times when Ms. Manning and I agree. Those kids have too many transitions before they get to middle school. And so if we did wings on the other two schools. And eliminate Betty F. Williams as a school, we would actually be saving money in in eliminating that school. We just transfer those teachers to those other places, building two wings. And we can eliminate Aragona property right away if we wanted to. Those sixth graders could go to Bayside Middle. Next week if we if we wanted to make it happen, that's possibility. Because that school can handle it and it's not falling apart like old Aragona property is. I taught at Aragona twenty five years ago and it was falling apart then. So I know that it's falling apart now, it's not, it's not a good place for those sixth graders to be right now and we just might as well, might as well admit it.
So Ms. Anderson, before, would you mind if if we let Dr. Robertson get in on this so that we're not speaking hypothetical for just a moment? And then I can come back to you.
I'm just saying, I just, I I I agree that we need to go with a Plan C. And and know that that Plan C is out there now, if that means you need to come back to us, you might not be able to do it on September tenth. But maybe, you know, as soon as possible, come back with something, thank you.
Yeah, so I apologize for bringing all of these meaty topics to you, let's say we had gifted program. You've got this, we're getting ready to look at cell phone free education, uh lots of fun. Uh yes, we can bring you a a Plan C, okay, but uh we can't bring it to you on the tenth. We need a, we will, will, I'll get together with Mister Freeman and uh we'll. He after he and I talk, I can share during agenda planning as to when we can come back with a Plan C. Uh they they're really, I I've listened to you, I pretty much have a good idea what you think Plan C should be. But Mister Freeman needs to be a little more comfortable with his ability to get some numbers that are even reasonable. He won't share anything number wise, cause he knows the downstream effect of, well, you said it was this. Uh so we're we're gonna need a little time to where he's comfortable to say, okay, a reasonable standpoint with a Plan C. We'll come back to you hopefully in four to six weeks.
All right, does that. You can ask Mister Delaney, he knows we're not easy.
Does that satisfy Ms. Brown or Ms. Owens or do you, would you still like to speak? Okay, Ms. Owens.
Thanks, eh, won't believe it. Thanks, I won't belabor it. Question was just how often are the scores calculated on the facility condition, is that every ten years?
It's when we do the long range facility master plan update.
So yes, every ten years, okay, thank you. Okay, I'll be quick, um. So. We will not vote on this then September tenth, is that correct? Okay, very good. Um, and, and I do think that we owe it to the taxpayers and the constituents in this district, you know, uh, we've been getting presentations on this. Since. Summer, since the spring, um, you know. Okay, well, this, this year, we've had a lot of presentations that are very similar. Um, in nature and. You know, there's a lot of. Wait, wait, wait in, in uh having to make governmental type of education decisions and. And uh it doesn't feel right to hurry, so, um, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Complete?
We're good. Okay, tonight on the consent agenda, we have two resolutions, National Hispanic Heritage Month and Suicide Prevention Week. We also have religious exemptions. And we have an annual service contract for geotechnical engineering. Thank you. Geotechnical engineering, materials testing services and architectural engineering services. Are there any objections to the school board voting on the consent agenda items or are there any requests? To move an item to the action portion of the agenda? All right, hearing none then, um, I invite my colleague to read National Hispanic Heritage Month. And who has that this evening?
Whereas our nation's greatest strengths. Is its vast diversity, which enables Americans to see the world from many viewpoints. And whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month honors the cultures and contributions of both Latino. And Hispanic Americans. And whereas. Latino and Hispanic Americans embrace a deep commitment to family, community and education. And a perseverance to succeed and contribute to the shaping of the country and our city of Virginia Beach. And whereas the twenty twenty four Hispanic Heritage Month observance theme. Pioneers of Change, Shaping the Future Together. Invites us to reflect on the contributions Latino and Hispanic Americans have made in the past. And will continue to make in the future. And whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach recognizes the importance of culturally responsive education. That embraces multicultural diversity within our school division. Now therefore be it resolved. That the school board of the city of Virginia Beach officially recognizes. September fifteenth through October fifteenth as nice, National Hispanic Heritage Month. And be it further resolved. That the school board of the city of Virginia Beach encourages all citizens to support and participate. In the various school activities available during National Hispanic Heritage Month. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board. Adopted by the school board of the city of Virginia Beach this twenty seventh day of August twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Um, and Suicide Prevention Week.
Okay, whereas suicide is the eleventh leading cause of deaths in the United States and the third leasing, leading cause of deaths among individuals between the ages of fifteen and nineteen. And whereas suicide is now the tenth leading cause of death in the state of Virginia. Whereas suicide strikes without regard to locality, socioeconomic status, ethnicity, religious preference or age. And whereas in the United States, one person dies by suicide every eleven minutes. And whereas education and community involvement are known to be the most crucial factors in preventing suicide. And whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach is focused on ways to educate students, families and school staff about suicide and prevention of suicide. And whereas Virginia Beach City Public Schools through sustained and dedicated efforts. Has implemented programs for all employees and students that recognize a deep commitment at all levels to raise awareness of suicide and its prevention. Now therefore it be resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach designates the week of September ninth through thirteenth, twenty twenty four. As Suicide Prevention and wa- and Awareness Week in the Virginia Beach City Public Schools. And be it further resolved that strategies and activities to address suicide prevention and suicidal behaviors are, be ongoing. In Virginia Beach City Public Schools and be it further resolved. That a copy of this resolution be spread across the official minutes of this board.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. So I call for a motion to approve all of the items on the consent agenda as presented, motion made by. Ms. Owens, seconded by Ms. Kendrick. The voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have ten ayes, the motion to pass for the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. I call for a motion to approve the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four personnel report. Motion ba- made by Ms. Owens, seconded by, seconded by Ms. Brown, any discussion? All right, seeing none. The voting board is open.
So Madam Chair, we have ten ayes, so the motion did pass for the personnel report.
Thank you. Um, do we have need for any other closed session this evening? Very good. Then uh it is eight thirty four and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.